Call the meeting, order please. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. If more than he has.
The Pledge of Allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Director Sean Love is not with us this evening. 4.0, School Board Member, Oath of Office. New members, please stand. If you mean wanting to take your paper, unless you can read that good.
You may recycle.
Yes, no one recycle.
Are we gonna do this together?
This is for me. It is an honor that you are appointed to guide the education of our community's children. As you recite the oath of office, you assume a tremendous responsibility as a director of our school district with the duties empowered by the Minnesota Legislature. This power puts you and the other members of our school board in the position of being morally and legally responsible for equitable quality education of every student in the district. We must strive to work together and with the superintendent and staff to lead the district toward fulfilling the vision we have created, fostering excellence for every student in the areas of academic skills, citizenship, and personal development. Having signed the acceptance of office and oath of office, will you publicly, please publicly affirm your commitment by repeating the oath of office after me? Aye. State your name.
I'm Mike Peterson.
Aye. You can say it at the same time. Swear that I will support this Constitution of the United States and of this state and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board member of independent school district number 2154 to the best of my ability, my judgment, and my ability.
Would you like us to read that?
Yes. If you wish.
Should we read it together, kids?
I think so.
Read it all together.
I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state and that I will discharge faithfully the duties of the office of school board member of independent school district 2154 to the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks Keith. He just got better.
We now have election of board officers. I'd like to nominate Mark Forty for chairperson. Any other nominations?
I'll nominate Mona Putzel.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Okay, nominations are closed. Now we have a vote. All those in favor of Mark Forty for chairperson, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those for Mona, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, Mona. Congratulations.
Want me to take over?
You need that. No, it's all yours.
No, thank you. And thank you very much.
All right, election of vice chair. Are there any nominations? I will nominate Mike Peterson for vice chair. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? And one more time, are there any additional nominations for the position of vice chair? All right. Pardon?
She's just asking for nominations.
No additional nominations. Can we do this as a, just a white ballot?
Well, nobody else, there's no other.
No other nomination?
No.
All right.
I don't see why not.
All right. Well, with only one nomination for the position, Mike Peterson, you are vice chair if you'll accept that.
Yeah.
All right. Position of clerk, are there any nominations?
You want it?
Nobody wants it?
If nobody wants it, I've done it before, it's not, it's not a big deal. You just sign a bunch of papers, you know that. If I sign your lay for you at times.
You have to be able to read.
I got, I got new glasses coming.
We're in good shape. All right, nominating yourself?
I guess so.
All right, are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? And one more time, any additional nominations for the position of clerk? Based on that, white ballot.
Thank you.
Keith, you are now the clerk.
Appreciate it.
And the position of treasurer.
I'll nominate Mike, Mark Forty.
I decline.
I'll nominate Tom Genolini.
Okay, any addition?
I was gonna, I'm gonna nominate Leon. He said he would still be interested if nobody else wanted it, but makes no difference. Tom, if you want, I think, I don't think Leon would argue.
You can.
I know. I did. We'll see how it works out.
All right. Are there any additional nominations for this position? Position of treasurer.
Can we ask Tom if he would take it or?
He'll accept.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any additional nominations? And one more time, are there any additional nominations for the position of treasurer? All right, take a voice vote on this. Those in favor of Tom for treasurer, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those in favor of Leon to hold the position of treasurer?
Aye.
Aye.
It's 50-50.
Have Leon, give it to Leon and he's better.
All right, you're gonna decline.
I'll, I'll decline.
All right. Kathy, could we impose on you to send Leon a note? Good, thank you. And again, the results of this are, I will serve as chair, Mike Peterson will serve as vice chair, Keith Young will serve as clerk, and Leon Shanlob will serve as treasurer. Organizational business, 6.0. 6.1, designate official depositories. And my understanding of this is that we've always tried to keep it pretty close to 50-50 in the deposits, is that correct? There hasn't been any change in that?
One-third, two-thirds.
One-third, two-thirds, I'm sorry.
Always been, yeah.
I'm sorry. One-third in Gilbert, two-thirds here? All right. Two locations are Miners National Bank of Edwes and the First National Bank of Gilbert.
I move that we still keep the same depositories.
I'll second.
All those in favor of keeping the depositories as they've been?
Aye.
Aye.
6.2, designate the official newspaper. We show the hometown focus at 1.50 per column inch, Musabe Daily News at 1.00 per column inch. I did speak briefly to the superintendent about this. Is there anything additional that you can add?
Well, I got the Musabe Daily News quote on Wednesday as I was doing the agenda and I threw it on there. However, I just would like the board to understand that what I found out after I put it on there, you're not really comparing apples to apples with the, with the price per square, price per column inch, as each paper has different sizes of column widthwise and, and print size. So I mean, and I don't know right now, I didn't realize that until probably this weekend that, that there was a difference. And then there's, there's also differences in, in what each one will print for that amount of money. Like we have, the Musabe Daily News one says school board minute rates, the hometown focus has several other things like calls for bids, ordinances, resolutions, things like that. So I'm, I'm not entirely sure that all that is encompassed in the Musabe Daily News rates. So I mean, my recommendation at this point would be to table it and let me and my staff do some research on that and we'll come back to it the next meeting.
Okay.
Can we get a motion to put that?
Move the, move the table. I'll support.
There's a motion on the table to, a motion to table this.
I'm sorry, who made the motion?
I did. Keith.
Keith, supported by Mike.
Mike.
Does that require a vote to table?
Yep.
It does, all right, thank you. All those in favor of tabling this item till the next meeting?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion passes. 6.3, designate school attorney.
We have had Mr. Glossmo, I don't know, you guys have been here a while longer than I have, but he's been here for a while. I did look into other possibilities based on, I contacted some of our regional schools and asked who they use and, and most of them use Mr. Glossmo in some capacity. However, there are, as far as school law goes, I mean, you're, you're probably looking at the cities to find someone that specializes just in school law. I did, I was contacted by a local firm this afternoon that said they were interested. However, I don't believe they have the experience that Mr. Glossmo does without spending a lot of time with them, so.
Well, I would like to make a motion that we table this and give the opportunity to both firms who address the board and give us a detailed explanation and what they want to do. I think this is only more than right, you know? And we could have them address us at the next meeting, which would be what, the 24th, 26th?
26, I think it is.
I would, I would like to hear what they have to offer.
26.
And I think that if it pleases the board, I.
So we only have two firms, I guess, as Lee said today, that are interested in representing?
And they're both local?
Well, there, there's lots that are interested, they're just not local.
Oh, I mean, okay, local then.
Yeah.
Well, I guess it don't hurt for them to do a sales pitch, right? I'd stick in it.
All right. Motion by Tom, support by Mike, to table designating a school attorney and the anticipation is, deal with it at the next meeting?
Ask them to come in, right?
Is that what you're requesting?
Correct.
The motion would include that they make a presentation to the board at our next meeting?
A presentation to the board so the board can have the presentation from both firms or whatever firms. There's three firms, two firms, whatever.
Okay.
Can't hurt.
All right, so the motion is to table this matter till the next meeting and then to request from these two firms, do we know who the second firm is?
Mm-hmm. It's Carver Richards.
So then we'll request that they make presentation at the next meeting. Well, all those in favor of tabling this item till the next meeting and then again to include a presentation, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Item 6.4, authorize reopening of petty cash funds. Those are itemized, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Those are itemized as the business office at $500, the high school office at $250, and the junior high office at $150.
I'll move. I'll second.
Thank you. Motion by Keith, supported by Mr. Forty.
Mr. Who?
That we approve authorizing the reopening of the petty cash funds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Item 6.5, authorize reestablishing the impressed fund and signators. The amount is $10,000. Signators are Jeff Carey, the superintendent, and Candace Nellis, our business manager.
I'll move. Support.
Moved by Director Peterson, supported by Tom Zet.
Yeah.
Okay, by Director Genolini. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. 6.6, authorize reestablishing investment account. Signators Jeff Carey and Candace Nellis.
Also move.
Support. Go ahead, Chad will, Chad will do it.
Okay.
Gotta break him in.
Motion by Tom, supported by Mark Chad, that we authorize reestablishing the investment account. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. 6.7, authorize Candace Nellis and Andrea Lintola to set up and monitor the electronic monthly wire transfers. And the electronic wire transfers are presently included in the monthly treasurer's report. And again, Candace is our business manager, Andrea Lintola is the bookkeeper.
I'll move.
Moved by Keith, support.
Chad.
By Director Chad. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. 6.8, authorize mileage reimbursement rates to coincide with the federal law, currently effective January 1 of 2015, that is, at 57.5 cents a mile.
I'll move we authorize reimbursement for mileage at the rates concurrent or current with federal law.
Support.
Motion by Mark Forty, support by Tom Genolini. Those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. 6.9, set the board salaries, they are currently at 200 a month.
And they have been for the last 15, 20 years?
Long time.
Yes.
I'll move.
I'll support.
Motion by Mike, support by Keith, that we keep the board salaries at their current rate of 200 a month. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. 6.10, set the current school board meeting dates, currently second and fourth Mondays at 5:00 PM.
Just throw it out there for the board to consider. And you don't have to, but one of the trends going on in the state right now is for boards to have one monthly regular meeting and then the other date being either a working session or committee meetings or stuff of that nature rather than having two regular meetings a month. Just throwing it out there.
We've actually talked for a while about having a working session.
Yeah.
I don't know that we ever talked about replacing a regular meeting, but we've talked about having work sessions.
Yeah, I think there's, how many districts up here they actually do that, they're up in a region here?
There's, within the last week here, there's, there's two that I know of that have moved that way.
Okay.
But I mentioned to Keith and Jeff after our phase training, when I talked to a lot of people down there, that they only have one monthly meeting, but, but their committee meetings, they meet monthly also, like their athletic meeting, and then they have a working committee, so they are having multiple meetings trying to have the conversation to get it prepped for the monthly regular meeting. And I was gonna suggest.
Not opposed to it, doesn't make any difference to me. Whatever the rest of you want.
Does anyone anticipate any situations where action might, where we might have a problem if we have to wait a month to take action?
We still have the option for special meetings.
Well, I mean, it takes, it takes a little bit of pre-planning. I mean, I need to have my ducks in row once a month. There may be occasion where I might have, might have to call a special meeting, but I would hope that we can limit that.
Yeah. It can always happen.
This is the first I've heard about having a working meeting once a month and then a regular meeting second. What goes on at the working meeting? You mentioned committees, all of different committees meet that day, that evening instead of having a board meeting, or what's the purpose of the working session as a separate meeting?
Well, what some districts do, and, and I kinda like the idea, I mean, like, say a topic would be test scores. I mean, we can sit around and have a, a conversation, we can bring people in to present, but, I mean, obviously no action can be taken at a working session. It's just the atmosphere is a little different. The committee meetings, I mean, you can, you can regularly schedule those then to coincide with that if you chose.
Okay. But for example, like when I was talking to a gal down at the face training and their committee meetings would be scheduled all throughout the month, you know, once a time and then they'd have kind of a set working meeting, I guess, it was kinda like a regular meeting, but like as Jeff said, there was just, you can't take action, you just recommend it for the next regular meeting, I guess, for lack of a better ways. That's how I understood it.
We can still hold special meetings with proper notification and?
Yep.
But the, the working session would be a scheduled meeting or a scheduled session?
Yes.
For instance, we could do that on the second Monday?
Yeah.
And then have the regular meeting on the fourth. But every second Monday, we would have a working session of some sort.
And it's still a public meeting, I mean.
Oh, yeah, right.
And I still think they have agendas and everything kinda, right? They're just kinda non-binding, more informal.
Yeah, you don't take official action, is my understanding correct?
Well, and I'll move that we have a working session meeting on the second Monday of the month and a regular board meeting on the fourth Monday, both beginning at 5:00 PM.
You wanna, can I just have you amend that a little bit to say we'll start that in February?
Sure.
Okay.
Motion is, I accept the friendly amendment.
Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
Well, we have a couple tabled items here that need to be dealt with, so I do need another.
Well, that would be the next one.
Keith. All right, if I may, I'll try and make sense of it, that the motion is that beginning in February, our first meeting of the month, which is the second Monday, would be a work session.
Correct.
And our routinely scheduled second.
Meeting.
Meeting, which is the fourth Monday, would be our regular meeting, continue to be the regular meeting.
Yep, you got it right.
All right.
The action meeting.
And if we, you know, and if we find that this is not working well for this board, we can change it. We don't have to be committed to it.
Yep.
Okay, give it a try and, but I, I agree that, I'm sorry, is there any additional discussion on this? All right, well, I agree though that it needs to continue to be on the dates that we're accustomed to and the options that we do go back to it or so that we don't confuse the public or the, the students that need to attend. Because that's another thing, you know, our students will still be welcome to attend this, it's a public meeting even though it's considered a work session.
Correct.
So, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. 7.0 is committee appointments. Now, in the past, we've just let Kathy know interest, who wants to sit on what committees, do you have any different instruction, how you'd like us?
Do we include the old assignment?
No.
Do you want me to send that to everybody and?
It doesn't matter, if you'd like, we can just.
Might as well.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
Doesn't hurt.
Yeah.
In case.
Either way.
Just send it out and have everybody sign up for the assignments that they want to serve.
I'll return you the email.
And then just return the information to Kathy, what you wish to serve on. The only one that I'm aware of that routinely meets during the day is the safety committee, correct? Majority of them tend to be that five o'clock time, but the safety committee, because it involves so many staff members, tends to be in afternoon.
Right, we're scheduling it for 10:00 AM.
21st.
On the 21st.
Okay.
Because there are people within.
Right.
People who need to.
Right, I'm just thinking for anyone who might want to participate, it's helpful if they know. All right, and then it is indicated on here for the new members, which ones are committees of the whole, so you're automatically part of those and then you can choose from the others. Do we have any documents that briefly explains what each of these committees does, or do we just presume they're self-explanatory? Negotiations, for example, will only meet when it's, when there's negotiations going on, that kind of thing, but, you know, like with the Community Education Advisory Council, you know?
I guess one question I have in like negotiations, I mean, there's lots of people that are assigned to that, but at what point do you assign specific members to be part of that, of a specific unit that we're bargaining with?
Last time around, I believe what we did was we asked for interest.
Interest, and then we split them because it was getting to the point where it was the same people negotiating year round, we were just steady. I think the last time they split between ASME and, and the teachers' union, we split so that's not the same people on each committee.
And there was some indication that there might have been conflict with some folks being with one group or the other, so they voluntarily worked with.
Different groups.
An alternate group, you know?
I guess I'd like to get that set up. Of all these, I would like to get that set up soon because we, negotiations could indeed start in February.
So we have both the teachers' contract and the ASME coming up.
All of our contracts are up.
All of them, and the conflict.
Except for mine, mine's the only one that doesn't.
So would you like folks to?
Do you want to give a bullet point list to all of us, what's coming up?
Let everybody know what those committees would consist of and let them volunteer for?
Or maybe we should call a budget and finance committee and figure, give it up? I mean, is that possible?
Budget and finance is different.
Or, you know what I mean, sorry, negotiations.
Maybe get back to Kathy by next, not this Friday, but next Friday?
Mm-hmm.
Of what they want, so do we have some kind of timeframe before the next?
Okay.
Yeah. Well, we should also have a deadline and when that, that needs to be back to you though, so that we know who's on what committee and that, otherwise, otherwise it may keep dragging out till next month.
Probably within a week.
Well, I guess I would like to have it before I send the agenda out on the 21st.
Okay.
So that concludes the reorganization, and there's two items that are tabled then, designating the official newspaper and designating the school attorney. So those are the only two items that'll carry into the, onto the 26th from there. And we'll call our regular meeting to order. Again, with roll call, the only board member absent is Director Shanlob. And I see our student representative isn't here this evening. We have two principals, I'll let you two fight over who goes first.
I'll go. We had a great year back, our first week was coming back after the new year. Except for the cold, we were inside for morning and afternoon recesses all week, including today. We've been hit hard with the flu and the influenza at the Franklin, but we're coming back, so. End of the quarter for us, for quarter two is this Friday. Report cards will go home the following Friday. And we're in the middle of benchmark testing for our district, so our students are doing the star reading and star math right now. And last but not least is the PTA has, is hosting a movie night this Friday, the 23rd, at 6:30, so. I'm not sure what the movie is, but.
If I may, I'm gonna interrupt long enough to introduce you to everyone. We may have folks who don't even know who you are yet. Sheena Stefanic is our new Franklin principal. Welcome. We're glad to have you.
Thank you.
And for those of you who attend our meetings regularly, this is her first meeting and we're trying to be nice to her tonight. That'll change. And Mr. Hayek, our Gilbert campus principal, go ahead.
Again, end of the semester is Friday, our schedules for our second semester are
Again, end of the semester is Friday, our schedules for our second semester are ready to go and will be handed out on Thursday. We do have a sixth grade ski trip to Giants Ridge on Friday, weather looks great for it for once, twenty-three and hopefully nice out. We are also doing star reading and math tests this year for assessments and are starting our OPA testing, which is a basically math and reading practice MCA testing, coming up at the end of the month and the start of next month, so it's testing season and it will continue pretty much through the end of the year.
Thank you. Item 4.0, visitor input. Please come to the podium, give us your name.
Hi, Pollyann Sorkin. First, I'd like to congratulate the duly elected board members, Mike, Mona, and Mark. Congratulations, oh, three Ms., I just realized that, three Ms. And the new board officers. Actually, I have some comments and questions on one of the agenda items, so I, I would prefer to speak during, is it 9.3, the staff development agenda item? And I think it'd be more appropriate and probably more meaningful, I know that according to your policy 203, the board chair has the authority to recognize, as it says, "Board Chair shall have authority to recognize any member of the audience regarding a request to be heard at the meeting." So it wouldn't be out of order to speak and not just during visitor input, so I guess that's up to you, Madam Chair.
Can you give me some indication of the type of input that you have regarding that?
Yes, my ultimate request or recommendation would be to table that item, that agenda item, because I think I have some additional information that you may not have, and I have some questions about statute and the makeup of the committee.
I'm not sure what, what to do with that.
Your choice.
I know, I know.
I'll just say that I have no opinion, since I'll let you guys, it's all...
Well, I could, I could tell you what I, I could tell you what I have in mind, but, you know, without being close to the conversation that you board members are going to have, it would be, I think it would be disjointed.
I'm fine with, with permitting you to speak at the time of the discussion.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to address the board? Item 5.0, agenda changes or deletions.
If you look on 8.1, I put on a different sheet in front of you for the Title I appointment of Mary Jo Primzich, on the board agenda that I sent out, I had eleven point two-five hours, that was my mistake, it should in fact be fifteen point seven-five, which is reflected on the new sheet. That was the only change I had.
Item 6.0, approve the agenda.
I'll move. Support.
Go ahead, Tom.
Support.
Moved by Mike, supported by Tom, that we approve the agenda, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Consent agenda. Looks like there are four items on here this evening, approving the minutes of the regular meeting of Monday, the December eighth, approve the treasurer's report for the month of December and the first check writing in January, acceptance of donations, and approving the 2014-15 certified seniority list. Do we have a motion to approve? Thank you, Keith?
I'll second.
Supported by Mark, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Item 8.0, personnel. Item 8.1, approve Title I teaching appointment of Mary Jo Primzich for fifteen point seven-five hours.
Fifteen point seven-five.
Thirteen, I'm sorry.
Got a horse voice tonight.
All right, thirteen point seven-five hours.
This is a replacement position, when Mr. Stefanic moved into the principal's position, there was a title position that is, title teacher that is long-term subbing in that fourth grade room, so it is, it's not a new hire, it's a, a new position, it's filling in for the rest of the year for, for that title position, that was vacated.
I'll move.
Support. Support.
Moved by Keith, support by Mark Chad, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Eight point two, approve extending the leave of absence for Director of Building, Grounds, and Transportation.
I had a committee, a few of you, prior to, well, back in November, we discussed the things that we can do to make that position more manageable. Some of the items are related to technology and they have not gone real well on our end, haven't been able to implement them, and I would like, I would like the, Mr. Heitzman, who's currently in that position, to have a little more time to see, once we get that in place, to see if, if it does in fact make a difference. And we'll continue to work with him, but I, I just, I'm requesting that the board grant me, grant him six more months to work out some of the bugs in that position.
I'll support. I think we have to, because we were, we were talking about actually adding another, a helper for that position when we hired Mark initially, and we didn't get on the ball. Play, basically, that's it, we were dragging our feet because we didn't know what to do there, but the, come push, comes a shove, we have to do it, look at it, because the last two people we've had there, I think they burned out, because one person cannot take care of all of that and be on call 24/7 all the time. They have to have some kind of backup plan and someone to help them, so I think we should grant that, the extension.
So there's a motion by Keith, supported by Director Forty, to approve extending the leave of absence for the Director of Building, Grounds, and Transportation, is there any additional discussion?
I would like to just add that, I mean, this is nothing against Jeff or Mr. Heitzman, but, I mean, as far as timing goes, we've had two months since we formed a committee, and from what I understand, we've only met twice. We've kind of come to a consensus on what we think it should be, I mean...
We came to a consensus on what it can be, and, and two of the items that we agreed to do, we have not, we've had extreme technical difficulties, and we have, the software for the, for both the programs in question are old, they're not compatible with some of the new computers that we have, and, and we've, we're struggling with the, with the, with the vendor right now to get those transferred onto a different computers, I mean, that's, that's the issue at hand.
And I respect that also, but there's been like fifteen months that this has initially been talked about, and, I mean, this process could have started...
It should have started, it should have started a long time ago, but it didn't, I'm just, I'm looking to make it right now.
Is Mr. Heitzman agreeable to the technology changes?
Yes.
That has been in place, would he still be asking for an extension, or would the issue have been settled, based on the committee, based on the committee discussion?
I don't know, I mean, yes, he agrees that it's a, it's a good step and he's willing to try that, we don't know if that, at this point, if that's going to be the ultimate answer, but...
He's agreeable to the six-month extension on the leave?
Yes.
While we try to implement what's been agreed upon?
Yes.
Okay, I'm comfortable with that, I'm comfortable with the six-month extension, based on that, I know it's been fifteen months or whatever, we've been talking about it, but the last two months is when we've really been working on it?
Mm-hmm.
And it seems we have a very probable solution, and I'm willing to extend the leave another six months to work those things out.
So that would bring us to the end of the current contract.
Yes.
So at this point, then, is he considered a permanent employee in that position, or still considered a probationary employee? If you give him another six months?
Well, he's, he's an at-will employee, so it's, it's just as good as being probationary, if you want to put it that way.
When you extend it, it's automatically...
Well, I'm just thinking in terms of the language of the contract.
Yeah, I don't know what the language is, but usually when you extend their...
Well, there's a compensation, compensation change there also, so if we're going to consider it still our probationary period, effective January 2015, he would have had a compensation increase, and are we assuming that that's going to change or not be implemented also? Because, I mean, by essence, by extending the leave of absence, we're changing the contract. So either we... By rights, if you go that far, you shouldn't change one thing without changing another.
Are we drawing up a new contract to cover these changes?
It'd be an amended contract, that just extends the leave.
It extends the leave, but it doesn't extend the payment, or it's approved the payment?
What it, what it does is it allows him, he keeps the seniority with us during that period. Nothing else in the contract would change. When that one expires, just like any other at-will employee, the board would have to decide at that point, are we going to offer him another one, or are we not? I mean...
Does this have the conflict with the union side of the house on the extending his...
Depends on how you guys vote tonight, if you guys, I mean, your, your vote would supersede what, what they do. I mean, the only thing that they could do, they could take away his right to go into the position he was in when he left, but he still has, he would still have rights to go back to the union.
So this is going to be the board overriding the union? Well, you know, we had committee meetings on us before, and never did get a recommendation on it at committee, and...
Yes, we did, there was, there was a recommendation, I mean, Mona, you were there.
Well, there was recommendations made on how to lighten up the workload, but at that, the two meetings that we had, Mark was present at the first one, but then not at the second one.
Right.
And at that time, Beth Collins was on that committee, myself and Chairman Putzel. Now, we never did come out, we made recommendations within that committee at that time on how to lessen up his workload, but then it never went any further than that, so actually...
It fell on me to do that, to carry that out, and what I'm telling you is I have not been able to, and I'm asking for more time.
I guess I would just add that the leave of absence expired January 2nd, from what I understand, and we're kind of looking backwards. We should have, we should have talked about this maybe last month.
My only, the only thing I'm really not clear on is, I was under the impression that there's a difference between the, the discussion we had on the duties, which are strictly a management right, versus the contract itself. I didn't realize that the contract itself was being questioned, and in this case, an amendment to it.
I don't, I don't know that it was...
I wasn't aware that we had gotten to that point.
I don't know that it was, it wasn't being questioned at that point at our meeting.
Okay, but that's your recommendation at this point that we...
This is just me coming to you, telling you that the recommendations have not been implemented at this point, and I need more time to do that.
Well, the motion on the table is that we approve extending the leave of absence for the Director of Building, Grounds, and Transportation. Think we go to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
Hold.
My count, Director Chad, Director Forty, Director Young in favor, Director Genalini, Director Peterson, and myself, opposed.
Now he's in limbo.
Well, until the next meeting when we have all, all members here. I think that simply means that we go forward with things as they've been.
But he...
With no amendment, we just continue to work and...
The twelfth, it's been ten days, it's been limbo per se anyways.
So if I understand, Mr. Heitzman is going to have to decide tomorrow if he wants a job or not, if he wants to stay in the position.
Right.
Because according to the contract, his leave of absence is up, and he is a, our transportation director.
Correct.
If he chooses to accept it.
That's, my point is, if I read the contract a couple times, and his leave of absence expired January 2nd, right?
The union granted him, the union held, granted him until tonight, so he'll have to decide tomorrow.
Well, do we grant that, or does the union grant that, I guess is...
They, by them granting it, they said that he could come back until after tonight, so tomorrow he'll have to decide.
All right, item 8.3, approve Community Education Director position for Lynn Bowle.
Lynn, obviously, was our retired principal, she used to be the community ed director by state law, if you're over, if you're a school over 500, you need a licensed community ed director in place to run that program. It is a $5,500 stipend per year, which she has collected half of that already, so if she stayed on, it'd be $2,250 for the remainder of this year. There are not a lot of people that have that license anymore, I would recommend that the board continue on for the rest of this year, as she has been.
Also move.
Is there a support to that? Motion by Keith, support by Mr. Chad, that we approve the Community Education Director position for Lynn Bowle, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? New business, 9.1, approve the agreement with MSBA for Strategic Planning Services.
We have, we started a little bit in December with, they came up for, for one day, we have dates in place, and last week, I finally got an invoice for their services, and it's $3,200 for the, for the whole, for all of the meetings that, that will take place for their services. It is a, when you look at some other consultants that do that type of work, it's, it's, I feel it's a very good deal.
That's not a surprise, you kind of thought that when you started. I'll move.
I'll support.
Motion by Mr. Peterson, support that, that we approve the agreement with MSBA for Strategic Planning Services, any additional discussion? Have we received any feedback from them on the, on stuff that they sent out on the...
Yes, I have, I have the initial report back that'll be presented on the 20th.
First meeting's coming up, right?
Yep, next week, I will send notices out tomorrow to all the folks that have volunteered to be on that committee.
Okay.
Do we have a full committee?
Define full committee.
Well, wasn't each board member to nominate one person?
Yes, I have three.
We have three?
Mm-hmm.
Out of seven?
Oh, yeah. Three.
I got five people turning it off.
I'm, I'm just curious.
I had a buddy turn me down.
Would you like more, I mean, or do we have enough with teachers and, because if there was going to be teachers and principals and some staff?
I have all, I have a teacher from each campus on board, principals, seven board members, myself, and three community members that have been recommended.
Did we explain this to Mr. Chad at all, this process?
Was that one of the meetings?
No, no, that's...
Sort of vaguely remember having to leave.
If you would like, if you have a community member in mind, you could give them my name, we start next week on, on the 20th.
Okay, basically, three meetings they got to commit to, right?
Maybe four, but yeah.
Much better than it was last time around. All right, we have a motion on the table to approve the agreement with MSBA for Strategic Planning Services, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. 9.2, approve purchase of a Type III vehicle.
Mr. Heitzman, you want to throw in two cents there?
Actually, can we rewind so I can throw in two cents for the last conversation?
I guess I didn't, I should have stood up and, and had some input about that, but let's start with a Type III vehicle. They expire after 12 years, that's how long we can use a Type III vehicle legally by the state requirements, we have one that's going to phase itself out of use in the upcoming months, so I'm recommending that we buy Chevy Suburban, there's two prices in front of you, I'm recommending a four-wheel drive for a change, because of my experience with hauling our enclosed trailer, doesn't work real well with a two-wheel drive Suburban.
There was no interest in any other make, model?
No.
I mean, my only thing is, is that we have a dealership in town, the Ford dealer, they don't really make a replica of the Suburban, the excursion that they had, we have a 2003 and a 2005, they're, they both ride like, they ride poorly, like lumber wagons, and we actually can't get certain parts for either one of those excursions, they don't make them, either from the factory or aftermarket, so we're opting to go with the Suburban to
have some continuity in our bus garage. the Suburban to have some continuity in our bus garage, fleet maintenance.
I guess the only thing I would add is that transportation is a huge number in our budget, and I would almost, I would almost like to take this to a transportation committee and talk, is it, to try to maybe educate myself and think of different options to try to, you know, is it worth spending $40,000 on a fleet of SUVs when maybe we could mix the man?
This was approved in last year's budget, these numbers, so it was already approved by the school board, in their, their budget allocation. If you wait, then it won't be here in time, and we probably will be a Suburban short for spring sports.
Well, and that's kinda part of my conversation, is that how often do we use these things for travel? I mean, we could explore doing cost studies on, is it feasible to rent them, rent a vehicle when we go over the road and have maybe a less expensive, cost-efficient vehicle just to go pedal back and forth between campuses? I mean, that was kinda my only thought, was to have a more, I mean, like you said, we're stuck with this for 12, 12 years, right?
Yes.
Can I say something? First of all, there, you're very limited to the vehicles that you have to choose from. Ford does not make an excursion anymore. The other vehicles they make now are too small, and the excursions we had were terrible on fuel. They were junk.
All right.
And they're, you can't get parts from, you can't even get a, is it a heater control? Or heater switch?
The main fuse block.
Main fuse block, you can't buy parts for it. So, and they're not, they're not even offered by the dealerships. So all you have are GM, GMC or Chevrolets, that's what you have.
Right, I guess my part of the conversation is, is, I mean, okay, that's fine, I understand that, but do we need all Chevy Suburbans? I mean, ain't no way...
I explored a Dodge van that has modular seating in it. It's relatively new to the market, and no one's really been the guinea pig, and I didn't want our school district to be that guinea pig either.
Right. No, I guess, like I said, the only other part of the conversation was, is would it be feasible to rent a SUV big Suburban when we gotta do athletic things? I mean, what's the, is it value added to have a, you know, a custodian going back and forth to Gilbert every day with a Suburban versus maybe supplement with a car and have a couple Suburbans versus... That's what I'm saying, I'm just, I'm just trying to have a conversation, whether it's worth it to have it now or...
You're saying vehicles that you want to go out and buy it yourself for about $54,000?
All right.
Schools get extra breaks on them, so any government agency gets a big break on them. So you're, you're getting a good deal to start with in here.
And when did you anticipate the delivery?
Probably eight to 10 weeks.
And you said that works for spring sports, we'd have it in time, and, okay. Can we get a motion one way or the other?
I make a motion that we go ahead with these, with the purchase from Waschke Chevrolet, simply because it's, it's a lot closer for any service we need, and they also, according to what I read in here, I think they offer two years' worth of servicing.
That's my understanding, yes.
It's free. So, that's my motion.
Is there a support?
I'll support that.
Any additional discussion?
Is there any other facilities available to, Michael brought up to, to go ahead and just have a, excuse me, have a unit leased for just certain occasions?
I didn't have time to do that homework, so I don't know. This is what I had time to do.
All right, we'll take it to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. 9.3, approve the 2014-15 staff development plan. And if I may, I will address this first. I've had a brief discussion with Superintendent about it. This was done out of the general timeframe. It was put together with minimal information. It was done so that we could meet a deadline. It certainly isn't the document that we would hope. We had talked about having something much more specific, and that just isn't gonna happen. And we're, what, about two months away from having to begin the process again? Is that correct?
That's correct.
So this was to tide us over so that we had something. The intent is to have a document that clearly outlines not just the expenditures, but very specific how those expenditures will be used, and in what, what capacity, yes.
You mentioned a deadline. What was the deadline?
It should've, my understanding, and Superintendent Carey can, can clarify this, but there's a report that is done in the spring, which is what we'll be preparing within the next couple of months here, and I have not seen one, if one exists. And then there's an October 15 deadline for submitting data to the state. Again, if it was done, I, I see nothing. So what we did was threw something together to meet budgetary requirements on the 2% set aside on that. And the numbers, Candace was kind enough to, to share from the business office, the general breakdown, based on, and it's based on staff within the building.
And this is the developmental plan for this school year?
Yes.
Just to the end of this school year, yes. Polly, if you'd like to take a moment to address the board?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. I apologize, Mr. Carey. I meant to get to the board meeting a lot earlier, so I could ask you or Kathy. I believe there should be a staff development bylaw document that would help in this conversation. Do you know of such a document? And I'm not sure if the district curriculum advisory committee has bylaws or not, but I'm, I'm pretty sure from my previous recollection that there is, and a document, and I think in that document it has what our particular district has for membership, because there's some statutory language, and I think we went above and beyond that, which we're allowed to, you know, for additional members. So, that's, was part of my...
Can you be specific on what your...
Well, I, I believe that previously on our staff development committee, that we had a board member representative. I remember Lori Graban, before she retired from the school board, she used to be the board rep, and she was the chair of the staff development committee for many, many years. And then I became the board rep for years, until I didn't run for reelection anymore. But then I, my, one of my questions is, I see the makeup that you have of Mary Hidukovich, Janine Baumann, Shelley Schreiber, Brian Haig, Liz Biondich, Jack Gritsmacher, Sheena Stefanic, and Lynn Bowle. First of all, I wondered what group they represent. Now, of course, Sheena and Brian represent administration, because there are particular categories in statute, and then in our own local makeup of representation.
So, I guess, just to, what are you, what are you suggesting that we left off, I guess?
Well, okay. 2014 statute, and it's changed since last year, because we, before 2013, we didn't have to reserve the 2% set aside, you know, we had a moratorium on that 2% for staff development, and then I think as of last year, now we're mandated to set that aside again. But, okay, it's 122.860. It's the staff development committee, and it says we must, as, you must as a board and we as a school district, must establish an advisory staff development committee. But here are statutory members. Okay, majority of the advisory committee and the site professional development team must be teachers, okay? And then, and those teachers, they are supposed to represent various grade levels, various subject areas, and special education. Then the advisory committee must also include non-teaching staff, parents, and administrators. So I don't see all of those categories represented in, in the recommended, recommended committee. So that's my first question.
Polly, I was, I was actually on this committee.
Okay, I didn't, I wasn't there.
So, I think to, in order to answer your questions and to facilitate this, how about if you and I sit down and I'll, I'll share with you what else I have? Again, this document was intended to be one page for this purpose only, but there is additional information I can share with you.
Okay, so, in that additional information, it's what these, these other ones look to me like they're teachers, from what I know of the teachers, you know? Mary Hidukovich, she's elementary ed. Janine Baumann, isn't she home ec? I'm not sure. Shelley Schreiber, where she represents, another teacher. Liz Biondich is fied. English for Jack Gritsmacher. Lynn Bowle, I assume, is community ed. I don't see any special ed, I don't see any non-teaching staff, and I don't see any parents, so.
Okay.
And that's why, before I asked, my recommendation would be to table this until the next meeting for that purpose, and maybe some other, you know, about the plan. And then, you know, I would really, I would really suggest that you have a curriculum committee meeting, and I'd like to attend that meeting also, because the staff development committee ties into the district-wide curriculum advisory committee.
Yes.
And we haven't had that for years, I know that for sure. And they work together, we, and we have a document, the school, policy 616, school district accountability policy, and it's way out of date. It doesn't even comply to, that might be another policy that you might wish to update. It goes back four years to 20, 2010 year, and that six-year cycle for reviewing curriculum.
Polly, how about this? How about after the meeting, you and I will set up a, a time and a date when we can sit down and we'll go through this.
Okay, that'd be perfect, thanks.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Polly, one question. You said that policy was 122.860 for staff development? On the makeup of the staff development?
122.860.
Okay, just wanna make sure, thank you.
So on the table, we have the discussion of approving the 14-15 staff development plan.
I move, we table it for now, then until you get together and see what's what?
Support.
All right. Motion to table by Keith, supported by Tom. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
Okay, item 9.4, approve Sheena Stefanic as a signator for the Franklin Activity Account.
I'll move.
Oh, second, I'm sorry.
Motion by Mike, support by Keith, to approve Sheena Stefanic as a signator for the Franklin Activity Account. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, motion passes. And 9.5, appoint resolution 571 in support of legislative action requiring the governor to appoint the school trust lands director.
Can I ask what this is? I read it, but it's just like, is this just a formality to send it in?
It's not a formality, they, we have, there's a school lands trust in the state, and typically they have a director.
So there's, right now...
Right now, we have no director, and, but the governor has been directed by a legislator to appoint one, but he still has not, and this is just a resolution that boards across the state they're passing right now, urging him to appoint one.
So this position is vacant, doing, how long has it had, has it been vacant?
A little more history on that. The trust funds, the school trust fund, which was by state constitution, set up to benefit the students in this state, over the past many years, has been administered by the Department of Natural Resources. And at the last legislature, they passed the resolution saying that a separate director of the trust fund be appointed by the governor. He has not done that. The idea being, potentially, possibly, money has been diverted from the fund and not gone to the students, because of who has been administering the fund. This was a way to follow the constitution and set it up more just for the students in the state. It is very important that it be passed.
But it's also, right now, very easy to dip into it.
Pardon?
Right now, it's very easy to dip into that money.
Yes, yes.
Because there's no one monitoring it.
And the whole idea is to preserve it for the students.
Oh, I understand, at face value, I was just wondering if that tool of money even just sitting there, but you're saying somebody else has been managing it?
Yes.
Or mismanaging it? You don't know?
That's the concern, yeah.
Okay. No, I, I just wanted to...
And I think a lot of the school district in the state were passing this back in December. I would've brought it up then, but I was predisposed on December 8th.
You were disabled.
Or whatever, yeah.
That's all I needed. I'll move, I'll move on it. Or do we have to, it's a resolution.
Just a roll call vote.
You'll require a roll call.
Sure.
Here you go for volunteering.
Is there a support?
I support.
Thank you. Motion by Mike Peterson, support by Mark Forty, to approve resolution 571. And we need a roll call vote on this.
Yeah, as soon as I get everybody's names done.
Okay.
Okay, Mike?
Yes.
Mona?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
I'm yes also. Unanimous.
It's unanimous.
Six oh.
Yes, and Mr. Shamob is in. All right. 10.0, superintendent's report.
I got a few things. One, I just would like to make you aware that on Wednesday, we're at the Gilbert campus, I don't know, it must've been about a year ago, there's a group that started up again, they hadn't, they hadn't been organized in a while. It's called TUG, it's a technology user group. It is a, I think it's sponsored by ARC for the most part, they, it's, but it's all of our regional schools, there's 23 in all, that parents have people just to share ideas of what others are doing, and to go through with that. And it has traditionally been held in, in Herman Town, these meetings, but Miss Seeca managed to convince them to come up to the Gilbert Media Center on Wednesday, and I think there's one other occasion as well. So we have two dates that are gonna be in Gilbert. One, the first one is on Wednesday, so if you're wondering why there's lots of cars, because there's 47 participants, so...
Is it just adult community members that just organize?
Nope, they're school personnel.
Oh, a school.
And next to, I'd like you to get your calendar out. I need a couple dates from you. One, hopefully, the last week of, let's see, we're on the 12th, probably that week of the 19th, I'm looking for another Buildings and Grounds meeting.
Probably not the 20th, huh?
That's strategic planning.
Right.
Not the 20th, huh?
You wanna do the, I'll just start throwing dates out there, you wanna do the 21st at 5?
No worries.
What days are those on? I don't have a calendar.
21st is a Wednesday.
That's okay.
No good?
21st is all for me.
22nd?
Yeah, I could make 22nd.
Yeah.
22nd at 5, anyone?
Mark, does that work for you?
Yep.
Okay.
Mark?
Buildings and grounds, 22nd.
22nd, Building and Grounds?
Yep.
At 5?
At 5. All right, the next one that I have, the first week in February, the folks at UNESCO are anticipating being done, and they want to come and present to the board. It's about a 90-minute presentation that they have for us. I'll start with, and they can, they're flexible on the time, so I mean, we can go early, late, whatever you need.
Do they have a date? I mean, could we just incorporate that into our...
We're gonna pick a day right now.
Well, I'm saying, could we incorporate in that our first working meeting, that following Monday, or is that not an option? Since you said sometime that...
If you wanna be here for three hours.
Well, that's true.
We could actually...
I can't do it on the 9th anyway.
The 9th?
Okay. It's a suggestion, I guess.
Well, I could, I could.
No, no, that's, that's what'll happen.
It's a regular meeting.
It's a working meeting, I guess, right?
90 minutes and plus a working meeting is...
I mean, it's up to you.
They'd be fine with the 9th.
9th, I mean, anything.
We'll be here anyway.
At 5?
If it snows, I won't be here.
Huh?
If it snows, I won't be here, on anything, so...
That's a working session.
The 9th, February 9th?
Okay.
5 o'clock, right?
Yep. And then I'll just remind everyone that, again, that next Tuesday starts our first committee meeting for strategic planning. I will be sending notification out to all of those who have signed up.
And that is at 5 o'clock also?
At 5 o'clock as well. I'm thinking I can get us all in here. I'm thinking I can get us all in here, I'm thinking this is going to be the place here. Uh, let's see, my last thing that I just wanted to throw out there as a discussion item. I, I know that this board has not in the past done school board retreats. But it's something that I have an interest in. Those of you who are not familiar with what a school board retreat is, it's essentially a working session away from here, where it's, it is still a public meeting, of course. But it's, it's more of an informal setting where we can talk back and forth. I've been here for six months now in this position. If I can get some feedback as to how it's going from your perspective and I can throw it back at you how it's going from my perspective and share some visions for where we're going, stuff like that. I mean, just looking for comments, is that something we would like to do or not like to do?
Lots of districts do them.
Lots of districts do.
Jeff took all my points that I was going to talk about tonight from face.
See?
I was gonna bring it all up.
And you thought your calls weren't recorded.
Well, I did, I did talk to Jeff and Keith about my training experience, so I hope, I was hoping it would do something. I, I'm, I'm fully supportive of something like that.
Hurt?
No?
Good idea. Can't hurt?
Well, kinda, for the next couple of weeks here, we're kinda a little tight, but I'm probably looking middle of February sometime, maybe.
Not on the 21st though.
Eh, no.
Would you just kind of want to feel it out, or are you thinking more of a routinely thing? Or just see how it goes?
Well, they, you typically only do one a year. I mean, it's not something that you can regularly do. It's kind of frowned upon.
Twice a year.
Did you have a location in mind or?
To redetermine?
I was, honestly, I just came here tonight to think, just if it's something that you're even interested. I haven't looked any further into it. And if nobody wanted to do it, I wasn't gonna-
Put time into it.
Put time into it. That's all I have.
Okay. Board member topics. Peterson?
Well, I guess Jeff already took everything I wanted to talk about. No, I just, you know, I, I, Mr. Chad and I went to phase trainings and had the opportunity to talk to a lot of people and learn how other districts work. And I've actually, I couldn't wait to get home after our St. Cloud trip and I called Keith. Kind of gave him an earful. Then I came in and talked to Jeff. But I, I mean, I just thought it was enlightening to see how other districts do things, you know, right or wrong and just exposure. And I guess I would, as, as I remember things, because now it's been a little bit of time since then that I, I guess I'll, I'll keep suggesting it, but I just thought it was neat. And I hope this week, when we all go down to the cities, we can all maybe talk to other people too and try to, it's always nice to say hi, how you doing, but it's like, hi, how do you guys do it? That's probably the nicer thing to get it, but. And one was talking on working meetings and, you know, retreats and stuff, so Jeff Carter kinda hit them subjects.
You stole your thunder, huh?
He did. But that's alright, I mean, hey, we're on the same page then, I guess, right?
Yeah, yeah, there's nothing wrong with that.
That's all I had to say. Welcome to 2015.
There you go. Keith?
I think the conversation you had and I had, there was a lot of ideas that I think that we should all look at. And I, I didn't write them down, so I can't remember.
Well, I have to go to notes and that's why I say these working meetings might be able to, nice forum to bring them up, you know?
Yeah, and there's, I, one of the things that came up was mentoring new board members, which we have not, we have failed to do. And I'm guilty of doing that, because I had just happened. I don't take the time.
If I can follow up with that?
I don't have the time right now.
I did bring that up to Jeff also and he actually took the time and, you know, kinda sat down with Mark, Chad and I and walked us through kind of the just, the two-second tour of the buildings and kind of the rundown. We got the cliff notes anyway, I mean, there could be some structure there, but that's moving forward, we'll figure it out. But I, I do thank Jeff for doing that. Sorry, Keith.
No, that's fine. Other than just congratulating the new board members and looking forward to working for the two years I have left.
And the many after that?
No.
Mark?
Nothing.
Tom?
Ah, two items. I was approached by, by a mother that, in regards to report cards. She has a computer, but her computer is not always working. And she was wondering why she could not get a actual report card.
We sent notice out that if you, if you are in that position and you want a paper one, we will mail it out. We don't mail them out to everybody anymore.
No, okay, so.
So as long as, if they contact any of the offices, they will send a report card.
Okay, if I have her contact you, then Jeff, you can-
Not, have them contact a principal.
Principal?
Of whatever building that she-
Oh, okay, alright, I'll take care of that. Second one is, I understand, down the street they were replacing brand-new windows in a Franklin building. Is there any, this was addressed probably to the, to the TSTW. Are we replacing windows already, brand-new windows?
We had, I'm only assuming this is what you're talking about, but we had, we had a situation on the south side of the, where we did not have shades when they put the windows in, so we had some teachers put paper up right on the window and it created a ground, greenhouse effect. And we had three of them bust. And yes, they were replaced.
So we replaced three windows then, Jeff, is that correct? Is that our, our expense then, or is that under our warranty or?
It was part of the package. They had extra glass there, so it was just a matter of putting in glass. They were, they were already on site, so I mean, it wasn't like we had to bring them back and get a lift in here and stuff. They were, they were already here.
But it sounds like we should be telling our teachers not to put one paper up in the windows.
We, we, we came up, the conditions were just right that day. It just, it happened.
It's just something happens.
And we, we remedied the situation the next day, so we haven't had one since.
Did we get our window coverings set?
On half the buildings. Half of them are up, the next half will be two weeks, I think.
Mark?
Ah, two things, I guess. Thanks for putting up with me for the next amount of years. It'll be a trip. But the second thing is, has anybody been in contact with like the county for out front here? The, I know last year it was all school, there's no parking out front of the high school here, there's no parking out by the, where the kids get picked up by the old junior high. Just curious if anybody's been in contact with the county to get that signage back up? Because I know it's been a mess with the buses.
Oh, the signage?
Yeah.
I wasn't aware of it, but I can.
Okay, because it's-
I'll tell Mike.
It's creating quite a bit of an issue.
Is it a county level or city?
It's county, county covers.
That's a county contract.
I know they took, took them down.
The contractor should have put that back up if it was in the contract.
Yeah, it was supposed to be back up just about the same way that it was. And I know they put the, the, those nice yellow lines up and then nothing else beyond that. Nobody knows that they can't park in the front of the school and-
They do pretty regularly.
And it's creating quite a issue for the buses from what I've heard.
Yeah.
So.
Maybe someone to contact over at the county. Thinking of a phone number. 742-9820.
Oh, geez.
What was the last part?
9820. Talked to Alina, showed director in the right position, the right person.
And I just wanted to welcome our new board members. It'll be interesting as we go forward here. And I'm looking forward to seeing everybody next, well, this week, yet in St. Paul. You're not going?
Nope.
Okay, hold the rest of us there.
Yes, I wasn't sure if my leg was going to be up to it, so I bailed.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.